To order the Waverly City Council for February fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, second, in council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, this becomes our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the January thirtieth minutes as distributed also by our city clerk?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion, second, council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Unanimously approved. We welcome Jordan Shanks back as our guest councilperson for the month of February. We'll try to keep you awake through the entire meeting. All right. Here. Any comments before we launch, Jordan?
No comments.
You're ready to go. All right. At this time, I would welcome any comments by the public on any agenda items that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Little.
Going a little way early. At the last meeting, one of my questions was if the Bremer Avenue Bridge is going or Bremer Avenue box culvert for the dry run project would have a fourteen to sixteen inch hump in it like the rest of the box culverts that we've had constructed so far. And the answer was that we weren't. It would be level. So my question tonight is if we can build one box culvert level with the surrounding road surface, why did we allow the engineer to put forth plans to the contractor who then in turn built culverts to the plans which created these humps in the street? Which is really causing a problem on Second Avenue and Fourth Street Southwest. It's going to cause a future problem on First Avenue Northwest. The other, the other two downstream further, we can probably live with because there's not a lot of traffic on those streets. So I'm, my question is how come engineer couldn't engineer all those box culverts to be level with the surrounding street, road surfaces? And the second question is, last week's council meeting when I asked about the streaming video of the sound on the first budget session, right after the break, the sound disappeared. And then while I'm asking the question, the video goes off.
Yeah, I saw the little note.
So it's like, I know that we pay a fee to Whortburg for managing the, that control room and making that signal get out there. And we, we pay students for hands-on, real-world learning experience of actually operating a control room, which is the, their, their interest in college. And we pay them, I believe it's twenty dollars per meeting and ten dollars for every hour after two hours. Because I've, I've joked with a couple of them that maybe my speeches have made it run into this third hour and maybe they owed me a tip for increasing their salary.
They probably do.
So at this, at the time, so set this as a real-world learning experience in that control room? And it seems that there's a problem with getting the switch turned on and off that connects the sound to the video. In the real world, you make that kind of mistake, you don't get paid. And if a twenty dollar lesson for the budget is all it costs for a person to make sure that that switch is on, that would be one of the very cheapest real-world lessons you could get. Because in the real world, you get fired for a job like that or you wouldn't get paid. And to learn it now for only twenty dollars would be quite a bargain for a real-world lesson. So see if the council would consider on the, not paying for that time spent after the, the break, which is around nine-thirty or quarter to ten, something like that. It's a couple hours for, for that meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor, on that topic, Mr. Little, actually, the students do not get paid. Only if they do not, only if they are on a school break do they get paid. But while school is in session, they do not get paid unless the meeting runs over two hours. Probably because we run over two hours.
And the good news is, is that Bremer Avenue will be level and we shouldn't have any problem there. The other is a bit rhetorical, I think. We have six items on tonight's consent calendar. They are two Public Service Works building bills to pay, one to Peters Construction, the other Design Alliance. We have a dry run, creek payment to make to Peterson Contractors. We have a liquor license to approve for Happy Hour Bar. We have a change of ownership for Dollar General to approve, and we have a liquor license renewal for Dollar General as well. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. It is unanimously approved. Regular business item number one is public comments and figures updates on the Third Street Southeast Bridge. I think, city administrator, for the figures update, may I turn that over to you?
Yes, sir. That's fine. I know at the last meeting, there was discussion on possible additional funding sources for various stages of the bridge, various options. And so, Engineer Mike Cherry did discuss some of those items with InterCog. We briefly went through some of the scenarios and then he did do a nice job of working up the various options that were listed along with those potential funding inquiries as well. And if it please the council, I just have Engineer Mike Cherry just go through these options briefly. Why funding would and would not be eligible for some of these when it comes to these TAP funding, state funding, STP funding.
Also, it'd be good for the public.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, in stepping through the various options, we looked at what are possible sources of funding in addition to the, to the local. What was brought up was, at the last meeting was seeing if there would be funds available through the Iowa Transportation Alternatives Program, which is known as, as TAP funding. And so there is TAP funding on the regional level and TAP funding on the state level. State level, there is a million dollars a year available and it is, has an application deadline of October first. And that is for the following construction season. Over the past two years, TAP funding has been utilized for projects that are, are basically not related to what we're doing. We have Iowa Living Roadway Projects. We have Native Grass Wildflower Seeding, Lewis Clark Multi-Use Trail. So if, if it is used for trails, it's used for trails of, of regional or statewide significance, part of that plan. Again, more recently, it, it really hasn't been utilized for the type of project that we are presenting. Interestingly enough, though, back in nineteen ninety-nine, we did receive funding from this source for construction of the Waverly Rail Trail. But more recently, it has, has not been used for those types of projects. Again, here this past year from January two thousand and sixteen, and again, it went towards like UNI's Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management and Iowa Safe Routes to School Partnership, those types of things. So looking in here under the, the criteria. Under the category of Transportation Alternatives, it does show Historic Preservation Rehabilitation of Historic Transportation Facilities. So if we were to seek this as a funding source, this is probably the, the subcategory that we would be applying for. Again, statewide, there's a million dollars available for that source of funds. But we get into regional TAP funding. This is through, through our InterCog, which is the Iowa Northland Regional Council Governments. And the only, this is usually programmed five years out in advance. So this year, they're taking applications for projects that they would fund in two thousand and twenty. However, they had a community that had funds programmed for two thousand and seventeen that were not able to develop the project, and so those funds got returned. So there is an opportunity that we'd have to act upon very quickly by like mid-March to make a request for those regional TAP funds. And this would be, I think, an eligible project for those funds. Additionally, straight, state transportation program funding. Again, these are funds that regionally we program out five years. We again are taking applications right now that will be acted upon in March for funding in two thousand and twenty. But because of the last federal transportation bill that was approved, there are some additional dollars coming in so that as we look out over the next couple of years, there is a fund balance that would allow for a three hundred thousand dollar request. So here again, if we act quickly in the next month, we could make a funding request for an additional three hundred thousand dollars in STP funds. So locally, between TAP and STP, there may be six hundred thousand dollars in funding available through InterCog.
And that would be for a repair?
Or a replacement. And as, as we go down through there, I have, I have these identified for each one. So under option A, which would involve repairing and elevating the bridge, under regional STP, regional TAP, I have it indicated that the, the likelihood of them actually funding a project is not likely because there is such a poor annualized cost compared to new structure. One thing that...
I was curious, sorry to interrupt, but who determines the annualized cost?
This is the annualized cost. A simplified calculation of annualized cost, take the total project cost, divide it by the lifespan. Now, you can certainly do more complicated math, mathematics on it, but for comparison purposes, the end result is fairly close.
But the, the DOT uses what they call the life cycle cost analysis is basically net present value of the benefits minus the cost?
Yeah, you can complicate this as much as you want, and it comes back down to...
I guess was my point.
You can, but it comes back down to being very close to the same comparison when you're going down through and comparing these.
What did you get?
Even using VJs examples, they use, they use that, and I guess that's where I first heard it. So I've done more research on it.
Yeah, you can use an amortization schedule to, to carry it out, but you're going to get...
It's just a, using basically current dollars or present dollars.
How are the benefits calculated?
Well, that's something we have to figure out.
No, but you said you, you just looked at that.
BJ, BJ did, when they did theirs.
On the RTA level, the Regional Transit Authority is made up of member communities and the county engineers, city engineers, and the mayors. And I can tell you, because I sit on it and sat on it for the last nineteen years, they're going to look at these as a pair, poor use of local funds. Okay?
I think the biggest thing is because it's so close to the cost of what a new bridge would be of lifespan, that's probably why it determines it to be a poor match.
Option B is the twenty-year fix without raising it. Again, regionally, the regional STP and TAP funds are probably not going to be supported by, by the RTA. So that takes us back to state TAP funds, maybe, it's preservation of a historic structure. And so then continuing on down, we've got option C, which is building a new bridge. The state bridge funds at a million dollars are available, and I think this option has the best opportunity of receiving support from the InterCog RTA, whether it's for STP, TAP funding, or both. State TAP, not a likely candidate because it's not a preservation of a historic structure. Option D, retrofitting and elevating the existing bridge for pedestrians. Again, regionally, it's, it's just not, it's not eligible for STP funds because it's not a vehicle bridge. Regional TAP funding, again, poor annualized cost compared to the new bridge. State TAP, maybe, again, because it's preservation of a historic structure. Going down to option E, this is retrofitting the existing bridge for pedestrians only, twenty-year lifespan. Again, we're getting down to maybe getting state TAP funds for preservation of historic structure. Again, state TAP funds, the funding cycle would be to submit application this October for funding next year. Option F, involve building a new pedestrian bridge. Regional TAP funding might be a viable option because it does have, is, would be seen as a favorable and long-term investment by the RTA at InterCog. Option G involve removing the bridge. Again, it's not eligible for any funding. Option H, repairing the existing bridge during a five-year life, for a five-year fix. Again, no funding because it doesn't have a sufficient lifespan. And then going down to option H, which is like the five-year repairs plus painting to try to extend the life out to fifteen years. Again, even at fifteen years, this is not viewed as efficient, sufficient lifespan for the investment. As far as state, or excuse me, regional TAP funds, locally, InterCog RTA did invest two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the Ped Bridge in Janesville. So that did come in funded at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Just a question, like on the H-plus, we were at one point one, it's up to fifteen sixty-five, is that because of the concrete work or?
So I got Ask Casey at WHKS to, to take a look at that, see the merits of it. And so in addition to the five eighty-five, he had painting at five hundred and eighty and doing the concrete repair for an additional four hundred thousand. And he's got concerns with, with painting it, that the painting could expose more damage or cause more damage due to the sandblasting process. And that to do a light sandblast would likely void any warranties. And not, so not cleaning the steel according to the specifications may have the appearance of savings, but not performing the repairs to the steel that might be damaged during the sandblasting process. Any steel that is damaged by the sandblasting should be replaced because it lacks the acquist strength to serve the intended design function. So he's, he is indicating, though, that with proper sandblasting and painting, it, it probably could extend the life out to fifteen years. But also that the sandblasting process, because it does actually remove a portion of the steel, may result in additional repairs and costs that need to be made.
These are real helpful.
Thank you, Mike.
Would we actually, would paint actually be structural if we, or rust, if we remove the paint or rust with sandblasting? I guess just, to me, it's intuitively, it's hard to imagine sandblasting would, would impact the structure by removing the paint?
It, it...
If you can explain that a little bit more.
So the terminology, that current Iowa DOT construction specifications typically require sandblasting steel to a near-white finish. A slight lower grade commercial sandblasting could be specified in the contract documents. In either case, the sandblasting process will not remove the paint, will not only remove the paint and corrosion, but will remove a very small amount of the steel. And it may uncover additional areas necessary for repair. And, and oftentimes, it can additionally compromise the steel. So the, the bridge has already been repainted at least twice before, and if they did it properly, they would have been sandblasting down. And in addition, any place that has the corrosion and pack rust, you're already losing steel and you got to get that rust removed all the way down to the white steel. And so in doing so, you're, you're removing, you know, removing portion of that steel.
So the sandblasting and everything would be included in the twenty-year repair, is that correct?
Correct.
Because not only they wouldn't bother to sandblast the floor beams and stringers, they would actually remove those and the entire thing would be replaced.
The entire deck and system would be replaced, yes.
And then a concrete overlay on top of that.
Any other questions of, by the council of Mike or of James? We thank the public for their patience because last Monday, many of you sat patiently waiting to talk, and at ten fifteen, it got too late. But tonight, we are regrouping on public comments. We will also have public comments next Monday. But this is a, a chance for you to weigh in in a special way. We do thank everyone who's been weighing into everybody. I know there isn't a person here who isn't getting countless numbers of, of opinions coming our way. And from last Monday to tonight, I've had numerous people get ahold of me with their opinions. So, but that's the process, and that's what we want. Tonight, we continue with public comments. I think we have a written letter from, from Mary, do we?
Mayor, excuse me, we have two emails that were submitted to me.
Okay.
The first would be actually from Erin Anhalt, and it reads as, "I am, I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, however, I did want to share input I received regarding the cost of repair or replacement of the Green Bridge. Of the fifteen to eighteen residents of the Southeast additions, parentheses, John Key, Crestwood, et cetera, parentheses, that I spoke with, one hundred percent are supportive of a new bridge, especially if the costs for a new structure are competitive with long-term repairs of the existing structure. Also, most indicated that they would like to see part of the old bridge retained and displayed in an appropriate location. The majority implicated that they would like to hang on to part of the bridge to display Waverly history, but they don't want future generations impeded by single lane travel in a progressive community." The second email was from Mary Childruth, and she, her email reads as follows. "As residents in Southeast Waverly representing residence for repair, we respectfully request that Waverly City Council members vote to repair the historic Green Bridge for safe but limited use for vehicles and pedestrians. We believe that a truly fair and reasonable compromise on all sides is a vote to repair the Green Bridge for single lane size and weight restricted travel, traffic. This decision will truly serve the vehicle traffic, traffic needs in this historic tightly residential part of town without compromising the safety of bikers and joggers seeking to connect to the various bike trails and especially pedestrians walking, including schoolchildren and their families. Regarding a larger, faster, two-lane bridge, we understand there are several viable locations farther east from which to choose. By repairing the present bridge, the council and staff will have adequate time to plan and prepare for a future, larger bridge in a more appropriate location. Such a decision to repair the Green Bridge will serve our community well while maintaining the all-important culture, history, and integrity of not only Southeast Waverly, but the entire city. Thank you so much for your careful consideration and thank you also for your service to this fine city."
Let me thank both. At this time, we will open up to...
Carla, can you forward those letters to me tomorrow?
Sure.
Thanks.
I think it's important, though, and I appreciate when people send them to you, Carla, you know, and that we read them because they can't be here. But I think just in the, in the spirit of, you know, fairness, and I know I can just speak for myself, and I'm guessing it's true for everybody else. I mean, I've received dozens of both emails and phone calls on, you know, everything from those positions to something else. And so, you know, sometimes when we read them here, they take on, you know, public visibility that, you know, I think it's, it's important to point out that there are many more voices. Those are important, too, but...
A good comment. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So apologize if it isn't balanced for everyone who's been contacting by letter and otherwise to all of us, that, but know that you are being heard through your council peoples. to all of us, but know that you are being heard through your council peoples. From the public, I think we shouldn't speak forever. Let's try to, but we'd like to hear public comments at this time.
I'm Barth Steer, and I live at 322 First Street Southeast. And I've lived there for 30 years. And after the flood, the new dam was proposed. It had no effect really on southeast part of town, but we were for it because it helped Waverly as a whole. The Dry Run project has no effect on southeast Waverly, but we supported it because it was good for Waverly as a whole. Now, we in southeast need a bridge. And I didn't realize how much I used that bridge until it was closed. And I probably used it two to three times a day just myself. Looking over this paperwork, the only thing that makes any sense to me is a two-lane concrete bridge because your overall costs per year are going to be the least if everything goes the way this proposal is. And it's not a historic, a bridge. If you're going to save something historical, the Catholic Church should have been saved. But the bridge had a lifespan. It's went way beyond its lifespan. It's all recyclable. It, you know, if they want to save a section and put it in the park, I'm for that, I guess. But it's not, it's a historical site, in my opinion. And we need a bridge in southeast. And all my neighbors agree with me. And, you know, if the repairs were super cheap, but it don't look like it's any cheaper than doing a new bridge. And people that are worried about traffic, you put weight limits on, that's on your streets, that stops the trucks, you put speed limits, you know, it's not an issue, I don't think. Thank you for your time.
My name is Brian Bergen. I live at 322 Third Street Southeast. I'm a couple blocks north of the Green Bridge. My personal preference would be to take the Green Bridge and convert it into some kind of bicycle or pedestrian bridge. I don't care about the historical significance, but safety on that street is a concern of mine. A little over a year ago, there was a driver late at night who crashed into a neighbor's car. In his hurry to flee the scene, crashed his car into a tree on my property and then fled the scene on foot. Maybe a year before that, someone else crashed their car into the house of Penny Peir and John Atkinson. I think there's lots of people who use that green bridge, or used that green bridge, to avoid the major thoroughfares. And definitely were not obeying the speed limit, talking excessive speeds. That road was not safe for kids. When you had the Little League fields being used, it was scary, the number of people who'd be driving up that street fast, you know, without care. Now, I moved into that house in 98, so the Green Bridge was there before me. So I can't complain about traffic from a one-lane bridge. But if you want to convert it into a two-lane bridge, that's more traffic, and I am going to be a little annoyed. I have had problems, had problems with these semi-tractor-trailer beer trucks going down to Amvets that would actually drive up onto my lawn trying to make the left turn going down to Amvets. I don't think we need semi-tractor-trailer traffic, and I'm pretty sure that if we had a two-lane street, that would be a problem. I mean, whether you're talking about Terex or GMT or whatnot, I don't think Third Street should be used as a major thoroughfare. I would love to see a bridge put in, maybe on Eighth Street connecting Southeast. I would be all for that. But personally, I would much rather see that Third Street turn into a pedestrian bridge. Honestly, I love the low amount of traffic that we've had. The neighborhood's been much quieter. I feel a whole lot safer with my kids playing in the neighborhood now that that street is closed.
John Kaiser, First Street Southeast. I'd have to agree with Bart. I feel we need a new two-lane bridge with a walkway at that location, and that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Randy Nindorf. I live on 321 First Street Southeast, and I did like that Green Bridge, but I think it's time. You know, from some of the pictures we saw, that you can see that the cost of that is, we can get this new bridge for not much more than the cost of repairing that one. I'm in favor of a new two-lane bridge, but I am in favor of weight limits and speed limits to reduce, you know, so we don't, we have safe traffic through there.
Thank you, Randy.
Dwayne Little, Waverly. I wrote an article for the newspaper, so everybody kind of knows where I stand on this issue. All of our opinions tonight are based on replacing the bridge because of the cost-benefit ratio. But at the same time, the council has deliberately, and the city has deliberately avoided getting a repair estimate from a nationally-known expert on how to repair these kinds of bridges. They can give you real costs. Right now, you're comparing estimated costs based on DOT standards for building bridges and blah, blah, blah. And one of those standards I just heard tonight was when you sandblast, it removes metal. Well, I've sandblasted sheet metal on cars for 20 years. It removes microns of metal. So yes, it does remove metal, but it sets a small amount of metal to get white that isn't even hardly measurable. Yes, you will have wherever you've got packed it rust. Rust is holding moisture, and as it grows, it creates more porous iron oxide, which then creates more packed rust, which eats into the steel. We already will know that before we sandblast where the packed rust areas are because they're in all the reports we've spent money on. So it's kind of misleading to say that we can't paint the bridge without removing metal. The metal's already gone in packed rust areas, and we know where they're at. If surface rust was allowed to degenerate steel, then why are we buying pedestrian bridges that are, that use rust, surface rust, as the coating on them? The pedestrian bridge for the golf course. We had several pedestrian bridges across the Dry Run. We have one down by the bowling alley that we bought, and we leave them deliberately with surface rust on them. If surface rust would eat into it, then why are we doing that? It doesn't eat into it. That's why we are doing it. It's a cost-effective method of coating the steel, really. We haven't looked into rust conversion. There's several of those that have come out since the 2003 study, where you encapsulate rust, or you can convert rust from iron oxide into another metal, which is suitable to be painted over or it can be left the way it is. We don't have those estimates because we never contacted the experts in the country that do this kind of work. So we're skewing the conversation tonight because we're using numbers that make the repair of the bridge higher than I suspect it would be if we actually contacted Box Steel in Michigan to come out and do an estimate. And their cost for an estimate is going to be way below what we've paid so far to engineers and for studies and stuff. They're looking at a train, a plane ticket and meals and motel room-wise here and this. It's partially a passion for the owner of this company, as well as it's, it's his trade. He's an ironworker. So we really, you really don't have all the information you need to make a decision. You haven't decided, do we need a pedestrian crossing and a vehicle crossing at Third Street? Because that eliminates all these, a certain amount of options that aren't even relevant then at that point. We haven't done that. I think Councilman Kang has brought that up towards the end of the hour and 20-minute conversation about this, that that was the first thing they should have decided. Do we, what do we need there? And it was a consensus, basically, that we need pedestrian and cars at that location. And it has been that way for over 100 years. So it's going to be pretty hard for the council to make an informed decision without having a figure from Bach. And yet, we keep saying that we can't contact them. It's like, well, staff can contact them. They can do anything up to $5,000 for a contract. It ain't going to cost us $5,000 to have him come out here and look at that. So if you want to make a good decision, you've got to have all the information.
Thank you.
I have one other little comment. And it's Barth Steer from Southeast Waverly. I've lived there 30 years, and in my time there, I've went through quite a few floods. And one of my concerns is every time we go through a flood and the debris starts, when it gets deep enough and the debris starts catching on that bridge, we get it in southeast. In 2008, it probably raised about two feet in an hour once it, once it got debris and started catching the water. It amazed me that the bridge didn't go at that time, if it was in bad a shape as everybody's claiming it is, but it stayed. But that's a problem, too, the flow when we do get a major flood. Now, maybe the dam will take care of that, I don't know. But in the past, it's been a bugger. And they really get it across where it goes across Seventh Avenue. Thank you.
I'm Dave Fraking, 403 Second Street Southeast. So just a couple blocks north of the bridge. Way in, just a couple of comments. You know, not having that bridge available to us, it kind of divides the neighborhood, which, you know, we're trying to keep the character of the town and the neighborhood. And so it really does break things up. I can certainly appreciate the reduced traffic through the neighborhood, which, you know, we've benefited from as well. But kind of to mirror what Bart said, I didn't realize how much we used that bridge either. And comment last week about, you know, taking longer to get around town, and it's true, it doesn't take that long to get around town. But it probably does take an extra 10 minutes every time you want to go to the other side of town or so, which, again, doesn't seem like a lot. But that's also partially why we choose to live in a small town like Waverly. If we wanted to take 15 or 20 or 30 minutes to get to anywhere, we'd move down to Cedar Falls or someplace in a larger community as well. So kind of in keeping with the, you know, the nature of the town and the neighborhood, it does make sense, I think, to have a bridge across there. Now, I'm not a big fan of the two-lane bridges that we've seen thrown around here. I would rather see us decide that we want to maintain a bridge, something like we have. I'm not a big fan of replacing or repairing the bridge that we have, just because I don't want to do this again another five, 10, or 20 years. You know, we've been looking at it already for a year, and we really haven't gotten too far with making a decision. And obviously, that's why we're here tonight. So I'd like to see a longer-term solution. I'm not a big fan of the cement bridges that we've seen proposed. I would like to see, you know, some sort of prefab steel truss bridge put back in that spot with the 75- or 100-year lifespan. I see you've got some pulled up right there, and I pulled some catalogs up as well, just to, just kind of see what was available. And I have no idea what the cost of something like that is. But I know they go up fast, and you bring a crane in and you set the bridge down, you have the embunkments made up ahead of time, and you're done. So we kind of need to decide what we want to have there. And I guess, in my opinion, I'd like to see another, probably a single-lane truss-style bridge go back in that same spot. And I don't know if you can do like an arch shape to the bridge, so you don't have these real tall approaches back into the neighborhood, because I think those would be kind of unattractive and break things up again as well. So that's just sort of my two cents. So if it were up to me, I'd vote for finding an alternative like that, but maintaining a bridge in the neighborhood and the character of something similar that we have today, that is indeed a long-term solution. So thanks.
Dwayne Little again. Bart brought up a question about the debris getting caught on the bridge. I was on the council in 2008 when we were getting the notice that we was going to have a flood in Waverly. And Ike told Ivan Ackerman, the mayor, then, said to me on the phone, he says, "Do you think we all go down there and take that chain-link fence off of that bridge?" And I says, "Well, how bad is the flood going to be?" Well, I'm being told it's going to be like 99. I said, "Well, in 99, there was water over the grating on each end, but the center of that bridge was all out and high and dry," I said, "because I stood on that bridge, and I watched the water going underneath, and I felt that old bridge trembling. And then when I felt it trembling, I thought, hey, I can't swim. Why am I standing on a bridge that could be going down the river any minute right now?" So I got off that bridge in a hurry. And I was very surprised to see it there the next morning. But it did have grass and stuff in there because the flood prediction was two feet under what was 99. So the water came at two feet higher than the deck on that bridge, packed all kinds of grass and sticks and flood debris into there. And, yeah, that had to create some kind of raised level of water surrounding that. We talked at that time about making some kind of quick release on that chain-link fence and some kind of barrier you could put so people wouldn't walk out on that sidewalk when the fence railing was down to eliminate that problem. Because the bridge normally was designed so the water would just flow through it. It would catch stuff on it. But there was one very large tree on the west side of that bridge that somehow went underneath that bridge and ended up on the east side when the water went down. That old bridge can take a lot.
Pete Lampy from Waverly. Most of you know my opinion on this. I've spoke before on it, but I was on the task force that looked into it. There were 15 of us that were appointed by the council that worked on that. The thing that we discussed right off the bat, that everybody here on the council has hinted at it, but you've not done it yet, and that's to state, do we want Third Street Southeast to remain a collector street for the city of Waverly that it has been for 100 years? If you don't have consensus for that, that makes it real easy to start changing your mind and where you're going to go. One thing that was brought, you know, constantly, we were brought up to us during the task force meeting, Mr. Cherry brought it up to us a lot about 10th Avenue. 10th Avenue, 10th Avenue is an east-west connection. Third Street is a north-south connection. It's a matter of, it's a historic collector street. The argument that by putting a new bridge in there and that this is going to become a truck route, we're going to have everybody running down through there, is just basically not a very practical thought. Where's a truck going to go? They're going to go wind around residential street corners to try and get in and out? It's a residential neighborhood. The Amvets isn't even there, that the beer truck's even coming down there anymore. So I think that the cost-wise, the most logical thing for you to look at would be to do replacement with a new bridge, pedestrian and vehicle.
Double speakers.
I think we just lost the youth vote, Mr. Mayor.
I'm humbled. Other comments by the public? Again, we will have listening at next Monday's meeting as well. And then we will, council will deliberate then on all we've heard, all we've heard privately, all we've heard publicly, and come up with the best decision. But these are very, very helpful comments. And we take every one of them seriously. Are there other comments?
Bart Steer again. I guess, you know, I would be even for a one-lane bridge, except then the DOT doesn't step up. So then the cost is all on Waverly again, you know? And that's the only reason I'm for the two-lane, because I think you can control the traffic and the waits and all that stuff. But the DOT will step up on that. And that's important. Thank you.
Your last chance.
The other thing that I didn't mention, it was put out that, you know, that we didn't discuss having to raise the elevation of the bridge during that task force. That was, I pulled out and went back and found my notes from the meetings. And we had considerable discussion on the fact that there was going to have to be a raise in the abutments. Bridge was going to have to be erased. The one thing we did not get into, and that was because it was going to involve some engineering that was going to have to be paid for. But we felt if the council at that time wanted to get into it, we could decide how to handle those approaches. But it was discussed and discussed at length. And that, and we still, as a, as a task force, said to go with the new bridge.
Thank you.
Any, we're not doing discussion, but any words of wisdom before I move ahead that any councilperson would like to offer? I don't want to get into deliberations or anything like that. But words of wisdom, anybody who wants to before we go?
I guess only because it's been mentioned a couple of times is the ability to restrict the weight limit on the bridge. Whose authority is that done by? And I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but that certainly would be something I'd be looking for next week is if we would go with a new bridge, can we as a community set the weight limit on it? Keep some eyes off.
Any other words of wisdom?
Words of wisdom, I'm not sure, but...
Well, it doesn't have to really be.
You know, and still, you know, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of input from the neighborhood, you know, Barth excluded, obviously. But as far as what we want that neighborhood to look like? Do we want it to be a collector street? Do we want it to be a thoroughfare? Do we want it to be, you know, a raised-up bridge? I guess, you know, I'd have to, again, push for, you know, keeping the status quo from a year ago. You know, my point, my comments last week were that, you know, we, we've heard a lot of opinions. And we've heard a lot of, you know, a lot of comments on whether or not we want to, you know, build a new bridge. We want to leave the bridge the way it is, tear it out, whatever. But the only real solution here, again, is to, to not offend or to, I'm searching for words, but put out any, any one group and whatever their opinions are, you know, the repair would, would pretty much cover everybody. I mean, the historical people that want to keep the Green Bridge, the people that don't want traffic in the neighborhood, you know, the people that want an alternative route across the river. You know, this repair would satisfy all, all of the, all of the opinions. Maybe not perfectly, but it would satisfy them. And as far as someone being really upset, you know, other than, you know, how much it costs, you know, I, I'm, I guess my opinion is still on a repair, whatever that option might be.
But, yeah, but the words of wisdom are in there, too. So, but any other words of wisdom, not just deliberation? Like information we're going to need to nail down before next time?
My only, my only thing is the, I guess, for my, the annualized costs that we're, that we've showed people is, I think it's misleading. And I would like to see the true cost, the way the DOT actually does it or the way VJ presented it. So...
That's words of wisdom. Yeah. Thank you.
This is, this is over the whole lifespan, not over like the bond.
The last, the last meeting when I talked about marketing math, and I was quoted in the paper, to me, this is marketing math. What I explained the last time was not marketing math. That was more reality. To me, this is a little bit, I would, I would say made up.
But words of wisdom are in there. That there's different ways to look at the math.
I guess my words of wisdom, kind of echoing, I didn't, sorry I was late getting here, be kind of like what Pete started with, with, when I got here and I suggested last week, is I think we need to, we need to start kind of at a process of maybe having a series of yes, no, like that chart was. Yes, we want to keep the bridge, no, we don't. And from there, we can, you know, if we decide, yes, we want to, if we say no, that pretty much our choices get fairly, fairly narrow pretty quickly.
And we'll do that.
If you say yes, then, then you're deciding, you know, one lane, two lane. And again, that becomes a process. We start whittling it down pretty quickly to where we go.
No, I agree with that. I agree with that as well. I mean, I think we need to determine, number one, if we need a bridge there, 100%. Okay, if we need a bridge there, then do we need to repair what we have or we need to build a new one? If we were to repair what we have, then we need to vote for that. And then, once we voted for repairing that, then we have a variety of options and a variety of costs that we need to decide.
Right. I think that's kind of the process we need to be looking at next week. At least for people to kind of start, start moving that process. Maybe we don't have the final vote for what we're doing exactly, but we at least are moving down.
Right. We're showing some process. And right now, we have no process. You know, we're, we're taking a lot of input and we're not actually acting on it. And it's time, after a year, it's time that we need to do something, whether or not it be...
Yeah. And which is basically was, thank you for that, because that's what I was thinking last time. We didn't quite get to all that. But, but that is the process. And I'm agreeing with both of you, and that's what I was trying to announce. Any other words of wisdom? Otherwise, we're going to move on. Okay, regular business item number two is to set a public hearing for upcoming street seal coating program. Let's go directly to a formal motion.
I'll move approval to set the public hearing date to review the 2016 Batuminas Seal Coat Program Project Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Cost for March 7, 2016 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Is there a second? It's been motion seconded, council discussion.
My only discussion on this would be, I know we seal coat roads. We do one-fifth of the town every year, so we kind of split it up. If we skipped a year and use this money toward the Green Bridge, I don't think it would do that much harm to skip one year and then go right back into that five-year cycle again. So this is part of the road use tax that we could use to help fund the Green Bridge and just take a one-year pause on the seal coat program.
It's a thought.
It's my opinion, because, you know...
No, no, good one.
Green Bridge has been closed for a long time.
Good one. Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resnick. Kangas.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Gade.
No.
But six to one, the public hearing has been set. A regular business item number three is to set a public hearing date for our budget. Let's go directly to a formal motion.
Move to set the public hearing date to review the fiscal budget 2016-17?
Or a date?
For one right below it, two.
Oh, I'm looking the wrong one. Set public hearing date to review citywide pedestrian, no, that's pedestrian.
There's no date.
There's no date in the motion.
Would that be the seventh, then?
March 7.
March 7?
Oh, sorry, it's on mine.
It's on mine, but...
No, it's not.
Okay.
I thought we agreed we weren't going to, we had a councilperson.
Oh, we're going to talk about this tonight. And that was the Green Bridge on the, that we moved to the 22nd.
Let me add wording then, Dan. For March 7, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
I guess my only question is that, is that the final, is that the first and only view that the public, public would have? And is that the final view before we vote? What's the process? Just so people are clear. It's a public hearing.
Okay, so the public has had access, just like you guys have throughout this process. It's been on Agenda Manager. It's been open meetings and so forth. So the next step would be the public hearing where they would voice their opinions.
You would have a publication in the paper of what's being proposed down to the state documents.
At that time, there'd be another additional meeting where we would probably vote on it.
No, you vote the night of the public hearing.
My only question would be the changes that we talked about during the process would be included?
Yep, we've included those already. We made the adjustments, the library budget, the other two items that were added, and the levy was held.
And so forth.
Yep.
And maybe that's, we can talk about that in public comments or whatever. But people should probably be looking to see that there's changes to what we've been discussing and reviewing.
Yeah, it'll be summarized. Unfortunately, estate documents are very summary-driven. And that's across the state, everybody has to use that template. So it doesn't break it out as much as we would like for the paper, but the full documentation would be available for review.
Yeah, okay.
We have to have that approved by end of March, right?
March 15th. Be certified to the state by March 15th.
Be on the meeting in which to do it.
And because of the publication dates, 10 out, not 20, it makes it, it pins it right down into a very small timeframe to get that done, so...
Public input before we roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Public hearing for the budget is set unanimously. Regular business item number four is to set a public hearing date on this year's Ped Ramp work. City Administrator, any comments on this one?
No, sir.
Formal motion, then?
I'll move approval to set the public hearing date to review the citywide pedestrian ramp construction 2016, project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for March 7, 2016 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion.
I guess my only, you know, I guess kind of the previous topic of Batuminas Seal Coat Program. Here, I would, personally, I would like to, the discussion limited to those that are impacted safety only because of the bridge topic. As opposed to just ongoing repairs.
Good foresight. We can do that.
Is this me?
Yep. No, 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 it resonates with me.
Well, those things can all come up in our discussion and ultimate decision-making, right?
Yeah. And we'll see how next week goes, too. It may be, you know, who knows? Might be short. Sweet and to the point. Public input?
I guess my only comment on that would be that we've had five years where we've required residents to participate and do the repairs and spend the money. I think it would be unfair to have had those five years of them to have a pause this year. I don't have a problem. I think I'd be interested in seeing on the seal coat, what streets really, really need it, if there are some that we can pull off and maybe get savings here. But I think on the, on the seal, or on the sidewalk side, the program, we're in year six or seven, and we've had five years of people being told they had to, had to repair it, so...
Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Resnick.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
The public hearing has been set for the Ped Ramp. Regular business item number five involves water rates increase for each of the next three years. City Administrator, any comments on this one?
Very briefly, Mayor, on item number five, six, and seven, that's what was discussed Saturday during the budget session, the two-and-a-half percent raise three years out for each of the next items. And so other than that, I really have no comments, sir.
This is inflationary, 2.5, yeah?
That was a term that was used, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Formal motion, please.
I move the first reading of Ordinance 1010, ordinance amending the water rates, charges, and minimum rate for fiscal years 2016-17, 2017-18, and 2018-19.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion.
This is probably a place for me to kind of raise the question I've raised the last couple of years with our snowbirds. Again, I'm usually, September, October, I'm getting contacted by several people that wondered if there's a more user-friendly way for them to be able to leave for the winter months and not have to turn in their rolling garbage can or pull their water meters or do those what seem to be pretty drastic things to get some of the non-base fee charges waived during the time that they're absent. So as we continue to look at water, sewer, solid waste, hopefully, we keep that in mind that with technology nowadays, there should be an easier way to help accommodate a growing number of folks that still want to call Waverly home but choose to get out of the snow and cold for a few months, so...
And this is first reading only, so it's a good time to bring it up.
I guess, I guess my concern, probably adding to that, is my concern is raising the rates for those that aren't as fortunate to be able to go south.
I just have a question about point of order. If on any of these, I mean, including the Ped Ramp and the seal coating projects, and now we're also talking about potentially, and I understand that, you know, maybe changing some things about water rates, if we have amendments to these motions in our second and third readings, does that have to go back then to, if something has changed in the motion, does it have to go back to three readings again? No, okay. All right. Okay.
Public input?
I just, I'll go, you know, both what Dan and Dave said. You know, one way to help snowbirds is just quit raising the cost every year on them so that they don't have to be that. And like Dave said, I voted against this three years ago. I think it's ridiculous that we raise rates two-and-a-half percent on our citizens every single year just to provide the same service. You know, our local businesses, you know, pizzas don't go up two-and-a-half percent every single year. Tana Bombs Jewelry doesn't go above and half, two-and-a-half percent every year. Thompson Shoes can't raise their prices two-and-a-half percent every year. But just to give someone the same water out of the same pipe, we raise it two-and-a-half percent every year. So that seems kind of ridiculous to me. And we're just keep raising the cost of what it costs people to live in Waverly. So voted against it before, and I'm going to vote against it again because I just don't think it's necessary.
More council discussion?
Just curious how you know what the businesses are raising their prices by?
Well, I've lived by Domino's for six years, and they've had the same special for large pizzas, and it hasn't gone up since I've lived there, so... Well, I've lived by Domino's for six years, and they've had the same special for large pizzas, and it hasn't gone up since I've lived there, so.
And Tittenbaum's, too, and Thompson Shoes?
I'm just curious. I guaranteeing you that no business in town is raising their rates two and a half percent every single year. McDonald's has had the same dollar menu at McDonald's since I've, since they built that new McDonald's, and that's been eight years, so.
No, they've changed their dollar menu a couple times.
Well, you're gonna make double for $2, you're gonna make chicken for $1. I mean, everything's been $1, so I'm just saying, they don't, it's not $1.25 and then $1.50, they don't have a three, if two and a half percent, I mean, they.
They've, they've changed, you know, the McDouble used to have two slices, they're cheap, now they have one slice. They do things like that.
Okay, well, we can fight over those kind of things, I'm just saying.
But, but two and a half percent is above the rate of inflation, you know.
It is.
You know, if we're increasing costs, maybe we need to tighten our belt a little bit as far as our costs are concerned.
It's not cost of living increase, it's not inflation increase, it's above all of those things, so, and we're doing it every single year, all the time.
Well, we switched, we switched to this from a alternating zero percent one year, five percent the next year, zero percent one year, five percent the next year, and this is actually a slower than overall rate of increase than that zero and five, zero and five, by compounding the interest on it and percentage wise. That, that, that's the difference now, whether it should be 2% or 2.5%, or 1.5% or 1%, that's a different discussion, but it is one of the changes by doing this, it guaranteed kind of a continuum, it allowed businesses to budget that, et cetera.
But what do we use it for comparables, are we comparing that to other cities and, you know, Northeast Iowa or Iowa in general? I mean, is that, is that a standard that we're following, or is that just something that we're setting a precedent for? And I think that's something we really need to look at.
Didn't you provide us with some information last Saturday on that, or where have I seen that? I know I've seen some before. No?
I mean, the reason we switched from.
Just a minute, two minutes, go ahead.
Well, I'm just asking a question, I thought, I thought we had some data on that.
Depending on the source, you'll find different data. I guess, uh, if you go to CFU site, they do the same comparison with 20 communities, and we were the highest by far in electric and water, so. And there's a lot of different sources, and the source that they showed us, we were in the middle. But I just look at my own and compare to the communities around us, and we're significantly higher.
I just think this is a slippery slope that we're going down, you know, you were, you, we want to, we want to promote economic development, but we, we increases, we increase every year two and a half percent our cost to live in the city. So, you know, there's got to be some changes that we can make as far as, you know, reducing our costs or, you know, being more competitive. I'm not sure, you know, but.
And it's on all three phases, so it's, your water goes up by two and a half percent, your sewer goes up two and a half percent, your garbage goes two and a half percent. Every year, all three things that youth services you use go up two and a half percent. Add all that up, year after year after year after year.
Electricity went up nine percent.
Electricity's went up nine, 10%, it's supposed to go up another nine, 10% this year.
No, when you, uh, you know, when that's cumulative over the year, you know, you're, you're, you're gaining more than, more than 7.5%, so.
Right.
More discussion? Any comments, uh, from city staff on this?
Would've been helpful to hear from my, my colleagues here about some of these things, I guess, at the budget session. Just, you know, would've been good to hear that earlier.
Yeah, I guess, I've been, I mean, unfortunately, I've been, I've been singing that song for quite a long time, asking for benchmarking, and, you know, even that was my, when I ran for council, that was one of the things I talked about, and, you know, I've, even when I was back in Economic Development Commission, I talked about our housing strategy, it was probably more about the cost of housing and not really the, the price of a house. It was more about the, the cost to maintain the house, so, uh, I guess my complaining and, and I guess voicing of this probably goes, uh, probably five years back, so.
And I'm on record, I'm on record of voting against it three years ago, and I said the exact same things then, so. And when we were, proposed this three years ago, we were proposed that we were going to replace water lines, sewer lines, make a lot of changes, do things, and what we did was build a four and a half million dollar public service building and took out loans out of these funds. So now, as you saw in the budget, PFM has projected that we need this two and a half percent to keep paying those bonds off. So are we just raising rates on people just so we can pay a bond off for a new building that we just, some people decided to vote for? I didn't vote for that, but, um, you know, that's, I've been against it the whole time, so that's nothing new for me.
And, and this is just, I guess, to, to do a reading, um, but I guess to, to that I've talked about, too, that as we raise our utility rates and our water and sewer rates, and, and the water and sewer rates, as you talked about, was, was funding a bond, but you can almost see that that's almost a tax that's paying for a building. But me as a consumer, I can't deduct that as a taxable deductible, so I'm really almost, uh, adding to the general budget with something that's not tax deductible. So I would rather see the general budget be more pure and our, and our rates stay more stable. Again, this is just a tip for reading, so.
Any public input?
Dwayne Little, never been a fan of these multiple rate year increases. It's telling the public, we're so inept, we can't handle our budget, we can't control our costs, so we want these 2.5% increases each year. Well, the second year is a 2.5% increase on the 2.5% increase the first year. The third year, it's on the first year and the second year, it's 2% on the increase. That's compounding. You're, you're not only just raising rates, but you're compounding it when you use these multi-year, um, utility cost raises. If you want to be fair to the public, have them yearly, come before the, the council, it's not going to be a big line item. Either you're going to be in for raising fees or, or you're not. The thing that's also bothersome is how much in the budget we're allocating water funds, which used to be general fund monies, now are becoming water rate fund money, enterprise fund money, to, to fund portions of the, of the city government that are, should be general fund. I've heard it many, many, many times, people say, you're raising my water because it's a tax, I can't deduct it on my income tax. But if you raise my levy rate, I can deduct that. So I guess it kind of reinforces a couple of the comments I hear from the council.
Thank you, Dwayne. Any other public comments?
Larry Hanson up at 1010 North Fourth Street. I'm kind of a new resident to the city of Waverly in the last year. Your council meetings are pretty interesting, but I do have one question for the city manager. Aren't water and sewer rates supposed to be self-supporting? Doesn't the water and sewer rates maintain the sewer and the water system?
I believe so, yes.
You believe so?
Yes. I have two weeks on the job in the city.
Yeah, I understand.
County government, so I believe so, is an answer I can give you for that.
So, I haven't seen the budget yet. Do you need that money to support the system, or do you have to eliminate some employees to keep the system afloat? Rather than just automatically raising it two and a half percent on everything that comes in? I'll, I'll give you a little time to get used to the system, but I, uh, previously come from a city of 7,000, was on the council for 20 some years, and I, I just can't believe some of the things going on. But if it needs to be self-supporting and you need the money, you're gonna have to do it, but maybe you've got to cut some costs somewhere else. And as far as, I normally go south for the winter, but I didn't this year. In our town I come from, we didn't have to turn the damn meter in. Like my neighbor, he had to turn it in, he says it's the most ridiculous thing he's ever seen. It should be shut off at the curb, or if you don't trust him, you should be able to read it at the, when you read the meter, see if somebody's using water and you know he's gone. It's just, it's ridiculous to have to take it out, and if something does go wrong in the house, it, the water could still be running down the drain and you'd never know it, but if you shut it off at the curb, it'll be shut off. I mean, they, in our city, we used to, they charged us $25 to turn it back on, and I didn't object to it. But I think it's a reasonable thing. But that's all I have to say for now, but.
Other comments?
I'd have to agree, I guess, you know, we're, we're getting accustomed to raising our rates every, every year, two and a half percent. You know, at what point are we gonna, you know, in 10 years, that's over 20%? You know, it's, it's a, it's a pretty slippery slope to be going down, and I guess I, I think we need to challenge our, our public works director a little bit, to, you know, cut our costs or look for opportunities rather than just raising rates.
I know, yeah, you can speak, go ahead.
My name's Doug Maraz, and I'd also support Dwayne's comments in terms of the multi-year passing. And also maybe, and I don't, haven't looked at anything, I just came here with my daughter tonight, but hearing that we're talking about, you know, just automatically saying over the next three years, we need this, I'm not versed in city planning or finance. But I think some more justification for why we need this for the public, at least for me as a, a citizen of Waverly, would definitely be helpful.
Thank you.
And that's, you know, I fall back to what the gentleman.
Just a minute, uh, other public comments before we let Councilman Gade speak? Councilman?
Is it okay?
Yes.
Like he said, I mean, the water and sewer and garbage fund should be self-sustaining, and the problem is, is that like he's saying is that we've gotten away from that. We use the water and sewer to take bonds out of to build a capital building, which should be out of the general fund. We're using these funds to pay the salaries of our employees, you know, we're using these funds to build up a large excess, things that we bonded out of, and now that we've bonded out of them, staff tries to say that we're forced, you know, you gotta raise it two and a half percent, and we can't keep paying those bonds that, you know, you guys voted on, so. To the public, the, the rates go to way more than just what it costs to deliver you the water. They go to, they're paying bonds on the public service building, so there's all kinds of things that it goes to, more than just delivering water and sewer and taking it away and back into you from your home. And two and a half percent every single year on top of itself every single year. I mean, I wish I got a two and a half percent raise every single year for the rest of my life, but I don't, and I bet a lot of people in Waverly don't either. And so if we do this on three other services every single year, that's gonna hurt a lot of people.
This is first reading, um, and we obviously put enough out there tonight that, uh, we can, uh, respond to that in the second reading. Pub, uh, roll call vote, please.
Genghis.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resnitchek. Gade.
No.
First reading of ordinance 1010, approved for three. Regular business item number six involves a similar sewer rate increase, a formal motion, please.
Move the first reading of an ordinance 1011, an ordinance amending the sewer rate, charges, and minimum rate for fiscal year 2016-17, 2017-18, and 2018-19.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded, council discussion. Almost the same discussion, right, gentlemen? Reiterate it, or we can just.
Yeah, we, we can't. My concern, too, is Waverly has a lot of people on fixed income, too, right? I mean, so, social security isn't really going up, I mean, if anything, it's gonna go down, so. We're just hurting people by keep raising their rates two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, three times every single year. Makes it harder and harder to keep living in town, and we want our town to grow. We don't want people to move away because our utilities are too high, so, that's all, I'll stop now.
Thank you. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resnitchek.
No.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
No.
Lampy.
No.
Genghis.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Ordinance 1011 is passed four to three. Regular business item number seven is a similar increase for solid waste, uh, motion, please.
Move the first reading of ordinance 1012, ordinance amending solid waste rates, charges, base rate for fiscal years 2016-17, 2017-18, 2018-19.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
I guess the only thing I would add, kind of off of Councilman Gade's comment about people moving away in Waverly not growing, it's, that's not happening. Waverly is growing, it's been consistently growing. The question is, is, and I agree with the concerns about the annual raises and whether we do it over three years, and that may be something that can be addressed with, with the public hearing and second reading, to maybe drop it down to a, a year by year and look, reevaluate it each year. The other thing that I'd like to know from all three would be, where is that rate? Is it really two and a half, or can we get by with a one and a half, or a one, or somewhere in there that would be a little more palatable? So that we can evaluate it each year as to where we're at.
Thank you.
I guess my only concern about the growth is, is, I think, you know, people move for a standard of living and quality of life, and my concern is, from an economic development standpoint, is that their disposable income might be impacted to where if they had more money, maybe they would buy locally, as our cheaper ones do, more. Or, you know, maybe we'd have, you know, people say it's like, boy, I wish we had this, I wish we had that, I wish we had that, but the business owners say it's really tough. So I, so I wonder if, uh, from that standpoint, I wonder if, if we would help our disposable income, our residents, and our businesses would be better off. It's a, it's a good discussion.
You know, and also, we have a lot of, we have a lot of people on fixed income in Waverly, you know, they, you know, retirees that, you know, maybe cannot, maybe cannot absorb that extra two and a half percent on a lot of things. Granted, we're not talking a lot of money, but still, it's an extra two and a half percent on their cost of living. And then also, you know, and I had a conversation with our, you know, with Brian Sullivan, and, you know, as far as expectations on our, on our waste removal. Now, he told me that, you know, with the new trucks, that, you know, we're gonna be expected to move or to place our container on another alternative street to make it easier for the public service people to pick that up. I don't think that that's really an option, I think that, you know, our service should be as was, and if any, any increased efficiencies or whatever should be absorbed by the, by the truck, and, you know, I guess I get a real problem with changing my service and then being charged an extra two and a half percent on top of that, so. I knew that's something we could look at as well, but, you know, I'm not in favor of two and a half percent increase unless we can quantify exactly what those costs are from a, from a real, real money perspective.
Another council? Public input? You were right. You got more to say?
Just got one question. It's, I really don't know the situation, because I, like I say, I've only lived here a year. How long has the city of Waverly been collecting garbage and trash? Have they been doing that a long time? Why, my question is, I guess, why isn't, why isn't it farmed out to private enterprise to do the system? Here again, the city I lived in, we had four or five different garbage pickups. Our rates were very reasonable. The only thing that we required was, they had to be licensed in the city to pick it up. We didn't collect any of the money. They collected all their own money. Sometimes, I don't know, I just get the feeling, private enterprise can do things a lot cheaper than government agencies. And that's just my opinion.
Other public input?
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, we're, are we even looking at alternative sources for this? I know that's not necessarily what you want to hear as far as a, a city services, you know, in employment perspective, but are we truly being competitive with, and I'm just going to say it, you know, waste management or someone else that can provide that service at a lower cost to the citizens? And that's really what that, what matters. And if we can't provide that service at lower cost, then we need to adjust our, adjust our costs to be aligned with that.
Mr. Little?
Senior citizens aren't the only people that are being affected by these rate increases. They're on fixed incomes, but so are young people, the people that are going to be the next generation in Waverly, the people who will be what Waverly is now into the future. They don't get a raise. They're working at seven and a half, eight dollars an hour. They're trying to pay rent, utilities, and, and buy a car, try to save for a new home someday. And two and a half percent is killing those people. Those are the kind of people, the seniors and the very young people are the ones that ended up at Community Foundation of Iowa that put in a funding request last, not this year, but the couple previous years, that run the food bank in this town. If you want to see who you're going to be hurting with these rate increases, just watch and see who has to go down there to pick up food. That's a hard, that's a hard choice to have to decide if you want to live in Waverly longer when, when your money just don't go far enough, and they just keep raising the cost of your expenses. Now, as far as waste management, in 2006, we were looking at, the council, when I say we, the city was looking at buying two garbage trucks for $357,000. And I instigated the waste management to come in and give a presentation. I talked to towns where waste management was servicing them. One of them was Independence, Town Summer Size Waverly. I says, what do, what do they do as far as like for community events? Do they provide extra dumpsters, or do we got to, would we have to pay for those things that we're now getting with our, our own system? They had very high glowing remarks about waste management and how thorough they are and how cost effective they are. But we wanted to control our own garbage, so we spent $357,000, thanked the guys for coming down from Mason City, and that's the way that worked out. So, now we're looking at all these rate increases from 2006 until now.
Other public input? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
No.
Resnachek. Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Ordinance 1012 is passed, four to three. We have reports from boards and commissions. The W report is in for December. Any comments? Formerly received, Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes from January 11th have been received. Any comments officially received? Staff comments?
None here, sir.
City council comments? Let's start with this side, either Edie and then work down to Dave.
I don't have any, thank you.
Dan?
I'm good.
The only, I guess the only thing I did, I would say is, you know, tonight there is, there's some big topics on the agenda, and I don't want to, you know, I, I know in the past, people says like, you know, sometimes council discussions are negative, and I guess I don't want to send a message that these discussions are negative. It's the business of the city. And quite frankly, when I was running for council, people said, hey, I'll vote for you if you help lower my rates, if you help lower my cost of living, if you help lower my taxes. And I'm really concerned. You know, I like to live here, but I'm concerned about stuff. And so, I have to do my job and I have to support the people, so I don't want this to be negative. It's just, you know, sometimes we have to have these tough conversations, and, and they might come across as, as not positive and not glowing and glamorous, but that's part of my job to run a city. So, I appreciate the patience as we go through this.
Thank you, David. Side, Dan?
I was just on the staff comments, but it's on the agenda for next week for study session. We've got...
Well, okay, so we have golf commissions coming. It'd take 15, 20 minutes, otherwise Green Bridge. That's it.
Green Bridge will dominate.
Perhaps we could get a little more detail on some of this, as far as the numbers as to what, what is needed for these utilities.
We'll definitely try and do that for next week.
See if we can come there. I guess my only, my only comment, I don't necessarily consider it negative in terms of, I, one of, one of the things that was commented on fairly early on when, when I was on council was the length of our council's meetings, and I know we had one adjunct reporter for the paper that got to stay here late with us sometimes, but early on. But I, I guess my, my answer to that was always, it's, it's, this is our chance to talk and actually bring these things up and have that discussion and have everybody have a chance to say it, because legally, we're not allowed to, to get together elsewhere and, and have discussions. That's, that's there. My only concern is, is, is what's the alternative on some, is, is, we voted no, some people voted no on this, but they didn't offer an amendment or anything to it, to, to change it. That would have... Yeah, this is, and all this was, was doing, setting the public hearing, which if we didn't, then we're not set up for the budget and we're not going to...
And that would be my point too. I mean, I, I...
Off of the budget, which again, that becomes, what's the alternative? Defaulting on the budget? Is that where we're going with that? Because if, if any one of the four yeses had voted no, we wouldn't have had the public hearing set for a couple of weeks to set the rates for the budget, which is also going to be in a couple of weeks, and then we're in violation of state law on the budget, and I don't really want to be in that mode. So, I guess, you know, some of the alternatives or the amendments on there is, is like kind of what I said, of, you know, drop it to a year by year thing. That's, that certainly is very reasonable objection and, and something that can be done, looking at what those other costs are, maybe doing that. But having, set the, at least, let's get the public hearing on there, and we can deal with that next week and then in...
The second reading it would be, right. I mean, and, and I appreciate you saying that, and, and sorry to come back when I said I didn't have any comments, but that's, you know, I, I think these are all important things to discuss, but you kind of end discussion if, if we don't have the second reading, and we have the whole budget issue, so.
You know, if that's, if that's baked into the budget as far as, is our, you know, our revenue, then really that should have been part of the budget and not a separate issue that we're voting on. If we're voting on the budget, let's vote on the budget. But if we're voting on a revenue increase, that should be, either be part of the budget or we're not, we're going to vote on it now.
I think that's by ordinance, so we have to have the ordinance for the rates. The rates are set by ordinance, the budget is, is set differently. That's just a, that's just the mechanics.
We're kind of putting the cart before the horse then, I think, maybe.
They go hand in hand, but I, I get what you're saying, but they, it's, they're two.
You know, if we've got so much money to, we, we need to know how much revenue we have to work with prior to approving the budget, so.
Michael?
Yes, I think David's comment about negativity is a good one. Just because somebody says something that I don't agree with doesn't make it negative. It would be negative if we became disagreeable and uncivil. I read an editorial in the Waterloo Courier on Sunday by the editor, who was lamenting the fact that the tone in city council meetings in the city of Waterloo needs some fixing. And as I read that, I thought, I don't think that's where we are in Waverly. I think that it's good to hear what we have to say, as long as we can be civil about it. So far, I think we've done that. It's easy not to be, and so I think we'll just leave it right there.
Thank you. Dan? Mr. Gade?
I guess, you know, it's nice to hear Mike say that because there has been letters to the editor to our paper that have said that our council is negative and in the past, within the past year. I mean, some of us have been labeled as being negative, and people have written letters to letter to call on us negative. And I agree with him saying, just because we have different opinions, doesn't mean one person's negative and one person's positive. You're just different. It's, one's not a plus and one's not a minus. So, I completely agree with that, and I wish the city would look at it the same way, so. And every one of us was voted in by people to be here, so, I mean, that's, I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Mr. Jordan?
Nothing tonight.
The mayor joins you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Adjourned.